Okay, you all ready?
Just two.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board for May 3rd, 2017 to order. The first thing we need to do is to have a public hearing because it's required that we ratify the results of the election and have a public hearing, allowing people to speak on that if they so choose. So, there's a procedure that I have written down here and I'll try to follow. So, the first step is to motion to open the public hearing. So, I'd like to move that we open the public hearing and the ratification of the school district meeting. And I need a second. Second by Maria. I'll read the resolution that we will...
Let's hold on.
What?
Let's hold on.
Yeah, sorry. All those in favor of going to public hearing? Six in favor.
Abstain.
Student rep abstains. Sorry. I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. The School Board of the Oyster River Cooperative School District pursuant to Chapter 20 HB 329 of the 2017 Legislative Session hereby legalizes, ratifies, and confirms all actions, votes, and proceedings held at the 2017 Annual School District Meeting, which was postponed due to weather emergency. This action is taken after a properly noticed public hearing. Said notice having been published in the Foster's Daily Democrat and having been posted on the school district website 72 hours prior to this action. A true attested copy of this resolution will be posted at the place of the annual school district meeting and light copies will be posted to Oyster River Middle School, Mastway Elementary School, Moharmet Elementary School, and on the school district website and with your original to be delivered to the school district clerk, given under our hands on May 3rd, 2017. And as I understand it, this does not affect Michael, your situation. I mean, you're not...
Correct.
You're able to vote on this.
Correct.
So, otherwise, it seems like you're ratifying your own election, which would be odd, but the elections are all set now. So, this is the other things were approved.
Yep, just as clarity, when the legislature passed this, they attested for all the elected officials in form of their legislation, which is why you don't have...
So, you're legit. Okay. So, does anyone like to speak to this resolution?
I'm...
Okay.
No voices, so I move that we close the public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Maria. Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, the student rep abstains. So, we now are in regular, in our regular meeting.
Do we have to move to adopt it?
Yeah.
Right. Next step is to adopt.
But I close, to close the public hearing.
So, we close, the public hearing is closed, so now I'll move that we, that we go ahead and...
Adopt the resolution as read by Tom.
Move by Kenny. Is there a second? Second by Al. Discussion. All those in favor? Six in favor, the student rep abstains. So, we'll need to sign this. All those who voted on...
Yes.
Should we do it now?
Yeah, I would just pass it around if you'd sign the original and then we'll keep it on file.
Approval of the agenda?
Of the revised...
What?
Of the revised agenda.
Revised agenda, yes. Are there any additions, Jim, to this that you interest?
No, they'll all happen either through my report or Sue's.
Okay. Okay. So, no addition. So, if you have a motion to approve, it's revised. Maria?
Yeah.
Move by Maria, is there a second? Second by Michael. Discussion. All those in favor? Six in favor.
Abstain.
Student abstains. The agenda is approved. A public comment?
My name is Kate Samar and I'm a kindergarten, first grade, multi-age teacher here at Mastway Elementary. And I'm here this evening to talk more about the growing class sizes, the numbers of students that are coming into Mastway for next year. First and foremost, I want to thank you for looking into this concern of growing class sizes. I'm a firm believer in early childhood education, meaning the sooner we can support a child both socially, emotionally, and academically, the better chances that child will have towards being a successful and independent learner. Knowing this, I strongly value the smaller class sizes in the K to 2 grade levels, and I believe that both teachers and students alike benefit greatly from a smaller ratio between students and teachers. Interestingly enough, I worked in Exeter for many years, so I got onto the New Hampshire Department of Ed and just looked into the average class sizes of elementary schools across the state and did note, did find that it was interesting that Oyster River is among the highest, averaging around 20. The state average was closer to 17. Granted, there are some very small schools in New Hampshire, so that does sway that data, because there's a few that have an average class size of 7. So, that's to be taken into consideration, but it was, it was interesting. So, I just thought I would mention my thoughts and hope that the school board can strongly consider hiring an additional classroom teacher for Mastway.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Whitney Burke and I am a community member, a parent of two daughters who I think would still say Mastway or Oyster River is one of their top 10 wonders of the world, and also a first grade teacher here. And thank you for being here to support our district. In looking at the projected numbers, and not only the projected numbers, but our current class sizes, the first grades are all at 21, 21, and 22. Our population is, is growing. We're all familiar with the research, but from within the classroom, the effects of the depth of the education that we're able to give our students is impacted greatly by the number of students in our class sizes. Kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, we stand at sort of the forefront of social and education assessments in our district for our youngest, most vulnerable learners. And the impact of class size to meet those objectives, it makes a big difference. So, as we move forward, we just ask that you please continue to look at and consider the importance of class size for our most youngest learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Hi, I'm Kirsten DeRocher. I'm sure you're not surprised why I'm up here as well. I am also a resident of Lee. I have been also a teacher for 19 years. I've been in Oyster River since 2002. Hi, Hannah Jane. And I've definitely seen a huge change in student needs since I began teaching to now. The children that are coming to us have great social, emotional needs. I've been teaching first grade for a number of years, and seeing the numbers continue to increase greatly impacts what we can do for these children. We currently have around a 1 to 9, adult to child ratio in kindergarten, which I feel is extremely important, but then when they come to first grade, it's going from a 1 to 21 or 22 adult-child ratio. Children are often coming in with a lot of emotional needs, situational needs between children, and we can't address those as quickly when we're continuing to try to increase their education and continue on with the day, but not address those needs that they're bringing. The other piece to consider at this age is that a lot of special education needs are not yet identified in the young years, so those needs aren't directly being addressed. And with less adult-to-child ratio, it's really hard to meet those needs. I just hope that you take this into consideration. I know you always have a difficult task in judging what we have for funding and what the needs are, but I think greater than any piece or tool of equipment that we could ever have, it's that adult-to-child ratio at the young ages. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? No? Thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the April 19th, 19th, the 2017 regular minutes? Al?
I'll make a motion to approve the 4/19/17 regular minutes.
Move by Al, is there a second? Second by Maria. Are there changes? Corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor, please raise your hand. So, five, five in favor.
Abstain.
Dan abstains, and you're voting yes.
Yes.
Student, student rep votes yes. Okay. So, those minutes are approved. At the end of the meeting on the 19th, we voted to seal the non-public minutes. Okay? And so, the way we approve sealed minutes is that you have those minutes in an envelope. If you could take a minute just to take a look at those. And then, if we can approve those without discussion, we can approve those in public session. If there is discussion on those minutes, that discussion has to go back into non-public. So, that's the way it works. So, should take a look? Do we have a motion to approve the non-public minutes? Kenny?
Before I move that, I just want to raise the question in that since the minutes are sealed, should we have more substance in the minutes and then reseal them? Is that important to do or not?
I don't think so, Ken, because the, the depth of that has been signed, so, and that's part of the sealed record.
So, then I will move that we approve those non-public.
Move by Kenny, is there a second? Second by Maria. Free vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. So, we abstain. One, two, is it four? Five? Five in favor, one abstention, and two abstentions, student rep abstains. Okay, so the non-public minutes are approved. Can I have the envelopes then?
Don't come at the Academy Awards. Thank you.
Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Mastway. Carrie Veish, principal here. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone who came to our program, Suesical. You can see behind the board some beautiful photographs from that, and thank Pam Felber and everyone who took part in pulling that together for the students. It really was amazing. Secondly, we've been, as usual, very busy here, but the Friday before vacation, we pulled together and historically, we like doing all-school events. We're very all-encompassing, I guess I'll say. So, we actually, our enrichment committee put together events based on Earth Day. So, kids spent the whole day, it was pretty amazing, working in small groups, working on interactive activities. They were paired up. Teachers went out and took every child in the school and paired them up into smaller groups, so I think it was nine, 10 roughly. So, they really got a chance to go through three different stations and explore and do crafts and activities and things tied to nature and everything. So, it was an amazing day. Some people would say that is absolutely nuts to do the day before vacation, but it really was amazing. We had planned to have a whole-school picnic. The weather didn't very, didn't cooperate very much, but we just brought kids down, got their lunches, and went back to class. It was almost the most seamless lunch ever, and then we continued the day without the whole-school celebration in the afternoon. So, it was wonderful, and I'd really like to thank our enrichment committee for pulling that together. And those are really the pieces that I find the kids remember when we go through slide shows at the end of the year and at the end of their, you know, elementary career, what they remember. So, I really thank the teachers that put their heart and souls into that. So, thanks.
Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school. Just a couple of real quick things. Looking forward to tomorrow evening. I'm heading out with Susie Renner and Linda Reeve. We're going to be attending the Scholastic Writing Awards up at Plymouth State University, where we have over 20 students being recognized for their writing achievements, so that's really exciting. And I also see it not just a reflection of my teachers, but all the teachers in the entire district, K-8, that teach writing, so that's really cool. Next Thursday, May 11th, will be our annual Service Palooza Day, so look for our kids out there in the community doing some work, some community service. It's looking good for this Friday. I met with Chief Curz and UNH personnel over April break talking about Cinco de Mayo. Again, the weather report looks good. Looks like it's hopefully going to be a rain out, so... The kids, the kids might, the kids might not be as active as they have been in the past, but I do want to note that Durham Police Department and, of course, UNH, they're always extremely supportive and want to make sure that our, you know, day, our learning during that day isn't impacted, so they've always been great. And lastly, a few weeks back, I forget to mention, for the first time, the Mastway and Moharmet PTOs came together. Every single year, I either come over to Mastway and talk with incoming fourth-grade parents, and I do the same thing at Moharmet. This year, both of those PTOs came together. We met at the middle school, and I want to say there was probably at least 50 families that attended, which was the highest attendance I've ever seen, so...
How was 65?
65, okay. But it was, again, it was, it was awesome opportunity to get to talk to parents, so I want to thank everyone that was involved with that.
Dennis Harrington, Moharmet. Pam, I never thought I'd be thrilled again by Peter and the Wolf. We had all Moharmet and Mastway kindergartens through second grade yesterday while the third and fourth graders were enjoying Smarter Balance. The rest of the school... Why is that funny? The rest of the school was, both schools were enjoying a superlative presentation of the arts. And to sit there and watch our students absorb a wonderful experience in the arts, where they saw a narrator who was out of this world, and I can't remember his name. What's his name? I think it's Spindly. I know him, but I can't remember his name. That's a reflection of my age. But it was just phenomenal to see the children really fully engaged, and their behavior was impacted by the quality of what was going on. And it really was just rewarding to see the children in, enjoying that performance. And I think a lot of the credit goes to Beth Struthers and Pam Felber for coming to the two principals and said, I know, and saying, I know there's a lot going on, but we really should do this. And I know my first response was, no, we shouldn't. There's too much going on. But eventually, it happened, and it was the right thing. Also, if you want to see the superintendent as an artist, come to Moharmet on the 12th of May, where he will be participating in our enrichment day, which heightens the arts. There'll be 30 different activities happening in small groups across the day, so come and enjoy it if you'd like.
Good evening. I just have a few announcements that Hannah will be filling in quite a bit of information this evening, so I just wanted to tell everybody a little bit about our SAT day and elaborate on that. While juniors and sophomores were taking their SATs and PSATs last month, we had our freshmen involved with a STEM day, so the entire freshman class was involved with STEM activities through the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. They had some other engineers come down. It was a wonderful day, full of activities that the kids enjoyed. And our seniors went out into the community and were involved with community service that day. So, we had a fabulous day. We hope to do something similar next year. And I also wanted to take this moment to thank Dennis for sharing with me and my children his exit interviews their fourth-grade year. Dennis sits down with every fourth grader and interviews them and speaks to them about their experience in the elementary school. And this experience, both of my children have gone through, and I really feel, see the value in that. So, I've taken on a little bit of a different bend. I'd love to meet with every senior. I don't know how he does it with every fourth grader, but I've decided to meet with every senior advisory group, and so I've gone from now, I started last month, but I'll continue throughout the rest of the school year to meet with all of the seniors and ask them some questions about their experience, some similar questions to what Dennis asks them in the fourth grade. And I have to tell you that the kids remember that. Some of them will say, oh, I remember my interview, and they get very excited about it.
It does wonders for personal life. A lot of Saturdays.
Yes. I'm not doing them on Saturdays, but thank you.
You're wise. Don't do them on Saturdays.
So, yeah, so the seniors and I meet during their advisory time during the school day, and many of them remember, I started, yesterday, I started my meeting asking them how many of them were interviewed by Mr. Harrington in their fourth-grade year, and there were three or four of them in the advisory that said that they did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, announcements, commendations, comments from the board? Kenny?
One, I just want to say how impressive it is driving up to Mastway. I don't know who did the tulips, but it's beautiful and it's just really looks nice. I want to thank the faculty for voicing their opinions and how greatly that's appreciated. Just school matters. At the state level, there was a bill that was going to include more spending for vouchers so kids could opt out of public school and use them for different private schools, religious or whatnot, and that was tabled by the House, which meant it's gone. The Commissioner of Education also wanted to realign the department, which was going to give his department incredibly more power, and that also did not go through. On the federal level, just in this past week, President Trump signed an order that did away with some of the school nutrition edicts that came through, mainly due to Michelle Obama. And I hope that our district, even though it is more expensive to have those quality and healthy meals for our kids, that we don't dumb down to the level that now the federal government is insisting on, and that we keep to that higher standard.
I know that the, I believe the group from the middle school went to China. Am I, am I right on that?
Yes. Hannah will talk a little bit about that.
Okay. Well, I'll leave it up to her, because it's...
Yeah, very successful. They had a wonderful time.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so hold off.
Yeah, I have a quote from a student, too, telling me about it.
You want to, you want to say something about that now?
Sure. I talked to a sophomore who went on the trip, Hillary Gould, and she said that, she, a quote from hers, "We had the chance to perform at two elementary schools, a dental equipment manufacturer, manufacturing factory in Shengdu University. Each time, we were welcomed so warmly and treated almost as celebrities. It was humbling meeting these wonderful people and children watching over them, or watching them open their culture to us. It was a moment where I saw that no matter what may be happening in the world's, world, people are people, and everything has such unique and kind personalities."
Wonderful, wonderful comment. I would just, I hope that we can see some clips. I think there's some video clips that have been made of it. I thought if, if it's agreeable to people, maybe in the next meeting, we could start with just a few minutes, just to see. I saw one of Dave and Ellen Urban's daughters singing in China, and there's, and there's something, I think, incredibly moving of, to think of Dave Urban and that group playing for Buster Keaton before this Chinese audience. I mean, American culture, Oyster River in China. I just think this is a wonderful achievement, that people that pull that off, it's fantastic. So, maybe if we could maybe just see a bit of that, I think that would be fun. Also, just want to thank Pam Felber. I came here and I saw this, thank, it's kind of ironic, it's a thank-you note to us, but I think really the thank-you goes to you for, for all that you've done, and I just maybe you'll pass this around. The kind of wonders you work with in these, these events. Other comments from the district, from the board, I'm sorry? Nope? Okay, Assistant Superintendent?
A couple of things, actually, I want to comment on, this is more of a personal story, on Dennis's interviews that he's been doing. I actually have an, an audio cassette, gives you an idea what the technology was then, of my 31-year-old son when he was in fourth grade doing his interview with Mr. Harrington, must have been 1994, I guess it was, which we still have and occasionally pull out and just get such a chuckle out of hearing his 10-year-old voice talk about what he, what he thinks his life is going to be. So, it's, it is something that comes with you for, for a long time. Couple of things I just wanted to report on. Obviously, we, the snow day changes. We moved our two professional days to the end of school, the 26th and 27th. Leadership is working aggressively to really make those two days very valuable and worthwhile for teachers. We've got some training, working with Sue O'Connell on some differentiation strategies within the math classrooms at the elementary school. We have some early literacy training going on with K-12 teachers. We have some work around differentiation at the middle and high school, as well as a lot of competency work. I think those two days are going to be extremely valuable, so please know that although it will be warm in June 26th and 27th, we're really working aggressively to make sure that we are able to maximize those days from a professional standpoint. So, that's, that's one thing I wanted to mention. I also wanted to comment on something. I was asked by the Southeasters District Leadership Group, along with another Assistant Superintendent over in Exeter, Esther Asbell, to go to the State Board of Education next Thursday, because they are going to be discussing standards. And one of the things, if you've been following the political dynamic with regards to some of the, the new views, or, they're new to the state of New Hampshire, the new views from our new commissioner around views about standards. There's some, some belief that we should, as a state, move away from Common Core, should reconsider whether we have next-gen science standards and so forth. And one of the things that my intent to go there is to really try to make the case as strongly as possible that the work that our district has done around these standards has really led to a tremendous amount of coherence. The success that we've seen in our math program is largely based on a very consistent, methodical focus, K through 12, on making sure we're all working towards those same goals. And I hope that as, as a school community, we continue to value setting standards and having educational standards that we follow. And certainly, my hope is by going to Concord and putting in my two cents, along with representing many of the districts of the seacoast, that that will carry some weight and will hopefully allow us to continue to work towards improving our schools through having good quality standards to work from. No set of standards are ever perfect, but not having them would, to me, be very disconcerting. And I also think it's really important, and another concern, is making sure people can make the distinction between over-assessing kids and having standards. I think there is particularly in the, the people who would say that we should not continue with Common Core standards, there is a belief that it's, that it's tied into the fact that we're doing a lot of assessing. You know, I saw the groans and the chuckles when we talked about Smarter Balance. It is, there's a lot of time invested in doing that assessment, and I would hate to think that people's feelings about the amount of assessing would cause them to also have a negative view of having standards, because in the end, having standards are great because it allows you to exceed them, it allows you to really focus. And so, anyway, I just wanted to get, get that out to you. So, next, next Thursday, State Board of Education is considering that, with the possibility that they might open the door to reviewing all state standards, which, to me, would be a very major step backwards, since I was in Concord last November, testifying that it was really a good idea to adopt next-gen science standards, and hopefully, they will see a better light. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if, did we, did everybody sign that resolution?
I have it.
You have it? It's all signed? Okay, I just want to check on that.
Okay. I just want to check on that.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Several things this evening. First of all, I want to give UNH sororities and fraternities hats off. They asked for a meeting with myself and Todd, the chief, in Durham, as, as well as the town manager. And it was the students reaching out to us, and their basic question was, and this is a room, the table was as long as this room, you know, with all the presidents. Actually, my opening comment to me and them was, I haven't never met so many presidents in one room. And, you know, they kind of looked at me. You guys kind of chuckled, but they're kind of like, it's kind of a weird joke, but, in any case, I definitely showed by age in the room. The, the kids were really concerned that the behaviors at Cinco de Mayo were reflective on the Greek houses. And the presidents, to a person, I think there was even one Chief Justice, as I recall as a title, really wanted to communicate that they wanted to help on Cinco de Mayo. Their, their goal is to have safe places for kids. They are not inviting roving students onto their property. They were very clear in their support of Chief Curz and his efforts in terms of students who are out of control. I was really impressed. This was a bunch of, you know, 18 to 22-year-old young adults who certainly were communicating with leaders in the community in a way that I was very impressed by. And I do hope it rains on Friday. Then, I also wanted to share with the board that Mr. Richard was able to identify the middle school student who made the latest bomb threat, and for board members to know that we have used the same procedure that we did the last time we caught the high school person. And we have put into effect the full impact of your board policies and procedures. And I want to commend Jay for being able to narrow it down so quickly, and we will take care of that issue through the disciplinary procedure. I also wanted to share with the board that in your packet, the kindergarten numbers are still, you know, growing, and there is a disparity between the two schools. Moheramet's got really ideal class sizes at kindergarten, and Massway does not. Going back to the teacher presentations, their concerns, you know, are real. The issue for all, for us always is to try to identify the resources to address the need. And so, tonight, in this report, since the numbers haven't changed dramatically, I would like authorization from the board to go forward and hire a fourth kindergarten for Massway. And I will defer on any additional recommendation until we get to the first meeting in June, but I am increasingly concerned by the second grade at Massway. It has stepped outside your policy guidelines, and Carrie and I, as well now as the staff, are constantly fretting over this issue. And if we're going to address it, we shouldn't wait beyond the first meeting in June, so that the principal has the opportunity to hire in a competitive market. So, I'd ask tonight for the board to authorize me to go forward in the hiring process for a kindergarten position here at Massway.
Could we have a motion? Kenny?
I still move that, to hire an additional kindergarten teacher for Massway.
Moved by Kenny is her second? Second? Second by Dan. Further questions?
Where's the money coming from?
Sue and I, as well as, quite frankly, the high school principal and the special ed director, have been scouring the budget to, and Todd, for that matter, through grants to make sure we have the funds to do this. And we, I'm comfortable tonight, we can go forward with the kindergarten spot. One of the reasons why I don't want to go with the second grade spot is I haven't identified the resources to do that yet, but I think that it is a serious issue that we can't leave unaddressed. And quite frankly, I may ask all the principals, directors, and Todd's account to cobble together the resources in order to make sure we have that second grade position. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with a K. I still want to work on the budget in order to make sure I can identify the resources for the second grade. And by, by the way, every principal that I've talked to about cobbling together the, the funds to make sure this school has a second grade have been incredibly positive. Nobody's dug in, they realize this is a real issue here.
Other questions?
I wonder, even with the fourth kindergarten teacher, the average kindergarten class size at Massway at the current enrollment would be more than 17.
Right on the edge.
Right. So, in addition to going forward with a fourth kindergarten teacher, should we also limit enrollment in kindergarten at Massway at 72, so that we don't exceed the 18?
I think that would be a perfectly acceptable motion, Mike, right after we get the authorization, because that is exactly what the board did last year. They, they capped the enrollment at Massway, and then every new additional kindergarten student would have to go to Moheramet. So, it, it, it sounds logical, it does cause some incredible transportation issues, because if the person who moves into the district is down where on the, on the new market line, we still got the kid, kids over to, to Moheramet. We, we, we have to do that. We, we can't just let this school balloon out when we have space at Moheramet. So, very well-fought idea.
And I appreciate that, but the only thing that I was thinking is to, knowing that there's the issue for second grade, that perhaps what we might wind up seeing could be a K-1 again, which, from what we've heard, has worked well, and then also a 1-2. So, rather than making, I, in a way, I think we might want to keep our, our options.
So, thanks for that, Ken. I'll, I'll explain why it's, it's not, it's not an option I'm recommending tonight. In order for a K-1 or a 1-2 to work, one of those grades has to have lower enrollment, and the other grade has the higher enrollment. But as you look at the enrollments in, actually, beyond kindergarten, you look at the enrollments in, in both schools, there is no low grade. So, to pull off a K-1, you, what you're trying to do is your, or 1-2, you're trying to draw the higher enrollment class into that combined grade. We don't have that, we don't have that option.
I completely agree.
Okay.
But the issue was, what are we going to do with the class sizes of 24, 24 and 23 in grade two? And if we're thinking that we might wind up having to do something with faculty, then having, then that helps with, that will help to distribute those children if we do then utilize a K-1 and a 1-2 mix. If we're adding one person, that one person will help to redistribute all of those. So, it still might come into play. If there wasn't the issue in grade two, I would totally say go forward, but we need to deal with grade two at some point as well, so...
I, I understand what you're saying, Ken, and grade two is a priority for me. I just need to, the first thing you guys always ask me is, where's the money?
Yeah.
And right now, I can't identify the money. I, I'm fixated on identifying the money. I will find the money for grade two, but I think it has to be a single grade, as opposed to a combined grade. That's my recommendation, anyway. I mean, board, I don't see a combin... Carrie and I went through this extensively with Todd, and we could not formulate a combined classroom that would reduce the class sizes in any significant way. So, you'd be creating a combined classroom, but it wouldn't lower the class size.
Only if we added more faculty. That's the key. If we're going to add someone else to help to take up that load in two, I agree. But if we, if we're not going to go forward...
Oh, if we're not going to go forward.
Exactly.
I see.
So, what I was more saying to Michael's point is just maybe have it safe, that there is a possibility that anything that comes in over, I think your number was 72, might have to, but not making that a strict edict at this point, till we really...
I think Michael was just addressing the kindergarten.
He's in kindergarten now.
No, no, I know. Right. Exactly.
I'm following you now.
Okay.
If, if we can't find the funds for the position, you're saying to mitigate it by doing combined grades. What I will do then, Ken, for the, for the June meeting, is show you what that would look like. And, you know, Carrie and I had done that with, with Todd, and we didn't like what we saw, so that's why. It's unusual for me to say whole classroom, because I look for those kind of situations, but I will definitely look at it.
Okay. But the motion's about kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
Okay. So, are we ready to vote on that?
Just one question. How many empty rooms do we have?
I asked that last... Yeah. Carrie has done a really good job of identifying the space for the kindergarten, and, and she has identified the space for a second grade if that comes to fruition.
Good.
But at that point, there is no more room at the, at the inn. It really would be a school that has finally maxed out its capacity in terms of students.
And we move the portables over here?
What's that?
We move the portables over here? Al?
I think Al will kill me if I just said that.
I'm not going to blast him.
But I may have. I mean, now that we've formed a facilities committee, actually, in dealing with this, you know, we're dealing with the immediacy, we're kind of reacting, but I think there needs to be a longer-term proactive approach to this, because we are now in the third year of this school growing. And the structure of this building does lend itself to some interesting ideas that Jim Rozicki and Carrie and I, and Sue have been talking about in terms of, if this doesn't stop, then we need to identify how we'll address a capacity in this building. And so, that would be a great little side issue for us to talk to in relation to the facilities committee. So, we do have some ideas. But it's not portable, so I think that, that was a, the decision was the right decision at the time, but to maintain that portable over 20 years was the wrong decision at some point. And I don't want to repeat the sins of the past. I want to have a better solution for this building than slap a portable down and then turn it into, you know, a permanent structure that we took a generation, literally, to get to the point where we could get rid of it.
Further discussion? So, I believe you have a motion and a second on the, to add, add a kindergarten position at Massway. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. You have that approval?
Thank you very much.
Thanks to those who spoke on this issue.
And then, just the very last issue. Emily Rogers submitted her resignation as a high school phys ed teacher today, and since I have it, I just, you know, thought I would present it under my, my report and, and thank Emily for the, for the two short years she's been with us, but I guess she's moving west. And west, by mean, I would have stayed west, like that far west. I don't know her specific plans, but I know that she can't teach here and be that far west. So, she's letting us know that she's leaving. So, just to accept her resignation.
Okay. Thank you. Sue?
Isn't there a motion to accept the resignation?
Sure.
Okay. Maria?
I'm, that we accept her resignation.
Moved by Maria. Second?
By...
Michael? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. Resignation's accepted. Okay.
Hello? Okay. I have a couple of extra things here, I think you have in your packet. Can we start with the, I believe it's the boiler bid? Jim? And I'll have Jim Rozicki speak to that, since he did all the work.
Okay. Good evening, board. Today, I'm coming before you to seek your approval on final award for the Moheramet Boiler Room Replacement Project that we have over the summer. We put the RFP out right after the board vote, or after the community vote in March. Had a pretty good response to it, had six different vendors, more local, and one out of Maine that bid on it. I'd like to bring before you, and ask for your approval for MJA Plumbing and Heating. They're an outfit out of Hookset, New Hampshire. We've used them in the school district for about two years so far, with some pretty major repairs and, that have been really successful. They're not only low bid, they bid low, just to get our business and get a bigger slice of, of the work that we have going on in the district. And I feel really comfortable with their performance to do the job the best they can.
Questions for Jim?
Kenny? So, I move that we, as recommended, award to MJA Plumbing and Mechanical, the Moheramet Boiler Plant, or Replacement that will be done.
Moved by Kenny. Seconded by Michael. Further questions? Discussion? What was the budgeted amount for this?
I put in the budget $130,000. This is just for the boiler replacement, which includes two pumps on the boilers itself, venting through the ceiling, and just the plumbing inside that boiler room. The controls portion is still out, meaning that's probably going to run us about 15 grand as well. I always like to carry a little bit of unforeseen. As you can see by the bids, I was kind of guessing almost $100,000, but we had some pretty aggressive bids. And they all bid on the same equipment as well.
Good.
See, there's money for a sec.
But I will have. Thank you.
Sorry.
Have we voted on this?
We did.
We haven't voted?
We did not.
No. Ready to vote? So, are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. That...
And then, the other one we have is for technology. Josh?
Good evening, everyone. There is a bid sheet for replacing all the wireless access points in the district. The lowest bid came from, and the recommended company is Optive Security. They're out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. We worked with them four years ago when we put in the complete redesign of the network. We went through a federal program called E-Rate, so the RFP was posted nationally, and we did receive a couple out-of-state responses, all the way from one, I think the furthest was Arizona. So, this would be a July 1 project, and it's specifically focused on access points, and it's the entire district. So, we'll be replacing and probably adding about six or seven. We have a couple areas that are underserved right now, so...
So, the intent is this is finished before the school year starts?
Yes. And we, four years ago, we did this, and we did a lot more. We ripped and replaced the entire network, and it was ready by the start of school. So, I'm confident we'll get it done, so...
Now, that's the same question I asked. Jim, what was the budgeted amount for this?
So, there's, the E-Rate program is a, it's through the FCC, and it's a program where we go out to bid, and based on our free and reduced lunch numbers, we actually get a rebate the following year. So, we're using, we had a budgeted amount that we're using, and then the difference between that and what the bid actually came in at is coming out of our reimbursement we're getting this year, so we have the exact amount.
Ready to vote?
I'll move it, I'll move that we approve Optive Security at $74,356.36 to do the wireless upgrade for our school district.
Moved by Kenny. Is her second? Second by Maria. Further questions for Josh? Nope. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in a favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, the other item I have is the Contribution Assurance Agreement for Primex. And you should have had in your packet a little description of what that is. We currently have a cap agreement for workers' comp, and now we're, they're asking to extend the cap agreement for workers' comp, and then to also put one in place for our property and liability. Property and liability with Primex is new this year. We went out to bid last year, and they were the winners of that. We already, we actually have a three-year agreement with them, so this, this would fall in line with our current agreement with them, so... I think on your, it tells you what those caps are. I think on your, it tells you what those caps are. Eight percent for workers' comp and seven percent for property and liability. Questions?
Questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Insurance Contribution Assurance Cap for three additional years.
Moved by Al, seconded by Michael. Further questions for Sue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in a favor. That's approved, so thank you. Ken to Jay?
All right, so, well, I've already discussed the China trip, but also, May is the month of field trips, and that name has continued to hold up through the years I've been at the high school. So, tomorrow, the marine biology classes are going to Newcastle Beach to go on a floating lab and learn about marine life in the field. And the US history classes are visiting the moving Vietnam Memorial Wall at UNH. And next week, French and Spanish classes are traveling to the MFA to look at artwork. And along with May being a month of field trips, May is also AP testing, and so for the next two weeks, students will be taking AP tests throughout the day. And May 16, 5:30 to 7:30, is the National Honor Society induction. This is where the expected sophomores and juniors, or the accepted sophomores and juniors become an official member of NHS, which is very exciting for them. The prom tickets went on sale this week for the junior/senior prom on May 20, and tickets are $40, and they'll be on sale all the way up to the 19th. The play this year is Into the Woods, and the actors have been working hard to prepare for their performance on May 25 through the 28. There's going to be five performances this year, one on Thursday, one on Friday, two on Saturday, and one on Sunday, and more details are to come on that. On May 31, there's the Senior Art Show, 5 through 7. This is where seniors who have taken an art class over the past four years can display their best work in the multipurpose room. It's a truly spectacular event where parents and community members can really get a feel for how wonderful and hardworking our art department is. And we have 37 more days till graduation on June 9.
Who's counting?
I don't know. Not me, I'm not graduating. And the seniors are working on planning their senior week, which takes place in the week leading up to graduation. This includes a trip to Six Flags, and visiting their old elementary schools, and walking down the hallways in their caps and gowns. And I'd also like to give a shout-out to Gracie Henderson, who's a former Oyster River student, who has just been asked to join the US Olympic, Junior Olympic Free Scheme Team.
Oh, can I add one thing? When you, you can pass along to those students, go to the MFA. Go up to the third floor and see Number 10 by Jackson Pollock, it is an incredibly cool painting.
Okay, I will pass that on.
You can't go wrong in the MFA. Thank you. Okay, we have the, for two discussion items, that we have the draft of the master schedule for school meetings. Is this something we should approve this, today, or do you think?
Well, normally, anything you get, you want at least a meeting to look at it before you take action.
Okay.
So, it's really there tonight for your information, and then, at the next meeting, we want to take action. So, if there's any commentary related to this proposed master schedule, it would be great to get that feedback tonight.
September 20 is the week of Rosh Hashanah, which is one of the special Jewish holidays, and it's a time for families to get together. If possible, I would like that September 20 meeting be rescheduled.
I have a question, actually. It's not on here, but one, and maybe this is too far out to put it out there, but one is that full, half-day budget workshop.
Or is that usually scheduled at the fall?
November, we did November.
I can't remember.
But we pushed it back.
So, from Michael, what we do in November, you know the process?
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay.
And I think the schedule avoids the problem we had this year of having the meeting, a regular meeting so soon after the annual meeting, so that's solved, yeah.
We live and learn.
Yeah. It'd be something different, though.
It will be.
Are there things that?
So, in terms of Ken's observation, do you want us to move it out? I should look at the calendar. Move it out a week, or do September? I would say move it out a week, you don't want to have meetings right back-to-back. Go to the 27th?
You'll still have them back-to-back that way. Still have one of the?
Oh, that's true.
Kenny, if you had it on the Monday, would that solve the problem, or is that?
Monday would be town council.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Or that may be Labor, oh, no, yeah.
What?
Yeah, I think we all have town council.
You know, another way of doing September would be to plant the meeting in, on the 13th, and have one in September, it's the opening of school, instead of doing two. If that's something the board is okay with?
It'd be okay as well.
Less meetings is really nice.
Okay. I have mixed feelings about moving it. I'm married to a Jew, so it's not that prejudiced, but there are many religions, many holidays, I have no idea this falls on any Muslim holidays. And if we're going to get into moving for one group, I know Christmas, but that's a national holiday. So, I have mixed feelings about the whole concept of, you know, I certainly respect anybody who doesn't want to come because of there. I was looking to see if we were having a meeting on November 6, which is very important to Swedes, but we don't, so I'm safe.
I think we could get by with a meeting on the 13th, and I think if we can, to respect the Jewish holiday, so. So, could you be, you know, maybe with the draft, try the 13th?
Yeah.
And if, for some reason, we have to add an extra meeting, we could find some other?
I was gonna say, just maybe, you know, worst-case scenario, kind of put a little circle around that 27th, just in case there is a load of stuff that comes up, and we do need a second meeting, that people are kind of, potentially, that it may be there.
Well, the September meetings are traditionally light, because we work so hard in August to make sure we're ready for the opening of school. That's kind of why I thought it might work, in this particular instance. So, I, we can pencil it in.
Yeah, just in worst case.
And on lock and load.
Okay.
All right, I'll have a revised one for your consideration at the next meeting.
We can vote on it next meeting. Okay. So, one of the things, I wanted to have some time to get started on talking about board goals for 2017, 2018. Wanted to get maybe an earlier start than we did last year, and maybe, you know, come in with, I was thinking perhaps we'd come in with a draft of possible goals for the first meeting in June. Now, you have in your packet the goals from last year, and I think some of those, we may want to continue on. We may want to think which new goals we want to have. And I think that, I talked to Dr. Morris, I think if we could keep it to six, that has given us some focus, and my own sense of how we've worked, I think the fact we haven't been spreading ourselves and asking the administration to spread itself over too many objectives has been really a good thing for everybody, so. So, I'm just gonna, I just thought we'd throw it open to what goals you see as central for us to, for next year, and maybe even to imagine where would we want to be in a year? What would we have wanted to accomplish a year from now? And, you know, what would we, what would we have done in a year? What could we do in a year? Yeah, Kenny?
So, to open the discussion, I put quite a bit of time and thought into it, and it does violate the rule of six, but I wrote down what I thought were good goals, and I can, if you so choose, I can read them out, and if we can, maybe that could be a starting point, or that's however you would like to proceed.
So, how long is the?
It won't take long.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, no particular order. Evaluate the effect that the change in start time has had on our district to include transportation and its cost, impact on parents, impact on students.
We're gonna have to go slow, Kenny, because Laura and I will never be able to keep up with you.
Okay, I can, I'll print, I'll type it and even print it to you. Tom wants me to go fast. Impact on parents, impact on students, which may include tardiness rate, readiness to learn in first periods, level of fatigue, and impact on after-school activities, and use this information to make appropriate adjustments. Two is to evaluate and continue to advance the breadth and depth of our world language offerings, if and when appropriate. Three was evaluate the use of homework assignments in the Oyster River Community School District, with a focus to include the learning value of assigned work, the overall volume of the workload, and the coordination, or lack thereof, in the assignment of homework among different subject areas. This evaluation should then be utilized to structure any changes if appropriate. Number four, and this would probably be my number one, to more fully engage the student body and the community in our continuing goal of addressing the mental health needs of our students and improving wellness in our district. Five is my pet peeve, evaluate our current bus transportation model, and look for changes that might increase ridership and reduce travel time, leading to less use of fossil fuels and a transportation system that is more economical. Next one would be continue with the planning in regards to the construction of a new middle school, with a goal of bringing an appropriate warrant article forward, perhaps in March of 2020. This goal includes increased community outreach and education, the development of design plans, and researching cost savings, and even, I'm sorry, and might be attainable with more strategic revenue that might come with strategic planning. Sorry, my writing. Seven is inform students and community members of our endorsement of extended learning opportunities, and facilitate greater use of this opportunity by our students. Eight is to continue to study and implement as appropriate competency-based learning and evaluation, and communicate this model to the community. And number nine is to work closely with the math department in grades 5 through 12, in order to the, in order to maximize the effectiveness of the teaching and learning of this subject.
I hate to think what a long list would have been like.
Uh, look at the town council.
That gets squared up to different people.
Yeah, it could come by. That's a good start, okay? Thank you. Al?
So, I was gonna throw, actually, this under what was formerly our goal number one, which is develop a communication strategy that engages the community in dialogue on key issues. Okay, well, since we've developed the strategy, let's talk about the key issues we want to, these are the issues I'd like us to do a report. One, start time, of course, because, you know, at the end of the year, how did it go? How did it work? Number two is from the high school where we sat down in the class, and they, the students talked about a culture club, and in there, there was homework, advisory period, block scheduling, all of that together coming out. It would be great to hear towards the end of, at some point in the next school year, what they found, because they were going out to visit other schools, what their ideas are, what's going on with advisory, so, homework. So, it's kind of a, that's a big concern of a lot of the high school parents, and that can also bleed over, I think, to the middle school. Number three, a report on the competency progress report. If we adopt it, how did it go? And again, that would be towards the end of the year, what changes we did do, was it onerous to do it? Again, it's kind of a sense like, but it's not static what we'd work on. And then, the fourth report would be the middle school language, how did it go? We started, we moved Mandarin from that after-school model into the school, and we're kind of expanding down to the sixth grade. How did it go, and what's the impact upstream later on? Goal number two, which is to inform the public of the condition of Oyster River Middle School Facilities and engage in a dialogue with all stakeholders. I think that, you know, we started last year, which was just that we needed to replace the middle school. I think our dialogue really needs to progress this year to the next phase, which is, start, we do need a new middle school, but if you say we need a new middle school, what are the options? And I know we already started to talk about that, do you do it on the same footprint? Do we put another location? Because I think that kind of ties together, when you say, this doesn't work, but these could. And then, along with that, I just kind of circled size. How big is this middle school gonna be? Because that's a big thought process. I kind of scratched off number four, because we already did it, and I scratched off number three, the wellness and mental health. It also would be good to, again, continue what's been going, you know, the change of direction, all that, kind of keep implementing it. So, I think that's just my mind. So, it's a lot of reports, I think, that are coming forward.
Al, that wasn't fair, you combined four of mine into one.
And I scratched two.
That's what we say, thank God for Al.
Yeah, yeah.
He's great at summaries.
I think, for me, one of, that we haven't really gotten traction yet on the middle school issue. I mean, I think there's, we started, there was some information out, and I think, I almost think that with the reports from Steve Britt, you know, we've gotten reports that would take us here, and the community is really right here. I don't think that the community is convinced or aware of the deficiencies in the school, you know, and I, so I think that, so I think there's a whole, almost we have to back up. And, and really, by the end of this year, really have community, more community buy-in, and maybe at the end of the year, have at least a site plan, you know. But, you know, we ought to set some goal to get to a certain place, and really be relentless about getting there, because I think that there's a trap of, okay, we'll have a couple meetings, and then it kind of drops off, you know, and I think we almost have to have a month-by-month, okay, what do we do? And maybe the facilities group, or, I don't know, how, how are we gonna get there? You know, how are we gonna get to a point where we have, we're ready to say, okay, this is, this is maybe the kind of school, this is the site of the school, you know, in a year from now, to be at that point? If that's the point we're thinking about. But I think, I think as a board, we have to say, be almost on a monthly plan to get there, as opposed to kind of being in and out. Does that make sense? Because I think, yeah. That would be a huge one for me. I think the others, I think, you know, people mentioned, I think some, you know, I think Al's combined some of Kenny's, but I think those would be ones I would support.
You know, one thing I'd add to that, too, is like, and I know Jim goes and meets with the local town governments, but one of the things with the middle school is, how can the towns try to mitigate the tax impact of this potential middle school? And so, I think it really stands to reason, there's a conversation in terms of economic development, in terms of each of the three communities. What are you thinking about in terms of developing, whether it be Durham, or, you know, out in Lee, along the traffic circle? What's going on, and what future developments are you looking at? Because those will impact the ability to kind of absorb the cost of the middle school. So, I think we should plan to go meet with those three governing bodies.
And I think another question I would have is like, how can we build, build almost support for, I mean, you know, because, I mean, we could have our own, you know, you know, board committee, but, I mean, to some point, do you want to bring in, you know, create a bigger committee that might, you know, and they're, you know, they're influential people in the area, they're people who are, you know, on boards, you know. To what, you know, at what point do you want to bring them in and have them kind of like advise us, or, you know, support, you know?
So, I was thinking the facilities committee would, after they do their initial kind of organizing, engage the selectmen that have already committed to the process in each of the three towns, so we do have a commitment from each three towns with representation, and we have commitment from staff. So, what I was hoping is that the facilities committee would absorb the previous efforts once it's organized, and then push these issues forward, because we already have a committee that engages each of the three towns.
My very favorite meeting that, in my, whatever, just five years, was a strategic plan meeting where... was a strategic plan meeting where we had invited people from all different groups as well as town officials and, you know, listened to what they saw as the needs of the community. And we kept them informed as the smaller group developed. And I, I think that it's essential that we get, that we hear from the community, from parents, from elected people, whatever the groups are, and listen to them first before, and not just present, see, here is what we have developed. Kenny, Kenny and I looked at that webinar. I don't think economically we can afford to hire those guys, but they can certainly, their ideas can be duplicated by anybody. And I think the whole board should see that webinar. As this was a small town in, on the west coast that had failed in their bond issue for how many times, two, four times?
More than that.
More than that? Then finally they said, okay, let's now listen to the, ask the people, what is it is important to you? Is it safety? Is it the technology? Is it whatever? And then that's how they started selling the project.
I don't want to get too much in the weeds and away from the goal of our conversation, but I was sick for the last meeting. The, I'm a, I guess I'm a board representative to what was known as, or is known as the building school, I'm sorry, the middle school building committee. What's the relationship between that committee and this new facilities?
That's why I just tried to attempt poorly to articulate. So I've asked the board to create the facilities committee in order to do some of the very issues that we're hearing. You know, I need a driving force behind this issue that's broader than the superintendent's office. And by having the facilities committee, I think, I can't remember whether it was Al or Tom who said, you know, we need to do this very purposefully and we need to do it on a monthly basis and we need to engage people meaningfully. So I saw the, the facilities committee framing that out sooner rather than later and building out that plan and then being active participants in the conversation with the committee that you've served on in the past. And because that committee already has the other pieces that we're looking for. It already has the representation from the town, has representation from the staff, from the administration. And so, once the facilities committee has kind of framed out the work and that has been talked about tonight, I see them being actively engaged with that, with that group of people.
Okay, thank you.
As the Fields renovation project became instructive to how we were able to pass the Durham Police Expansion Renovation Project, that Durham Police Renovation Project really to me learnt a lot on how to go about with middle school. I think that project was very similar. It was reaching out to a community that might not always interface with it, defining the need, presenting the economics of it.
I think that the chief Currie did a fabulous job in, in reaching out to the community. So, you know, I think there's this broad outreach that we're talking about and then there's the personalized outreach. I think that's where the chief really shined because he was in people's living rooms. He was at their churches. He was at their clubs. He was at their organizations. I think that's where we want to be when we're building up momentum. Right now, I think Tom is right, what we're trying to do is inform and I think Maria is right, and elicit, you know, priorities. But when we're starting to drive down the home path, I think the chief did it very purposefully and very personally.
Right, but the process was, I mean, the plans came through a lot of interaction. It wasn't as if the plans just came out of the blue. That was a project many years in planning. And you're right, the chief did a great job.
So I've talked to the chief along those lines already, Ken. See how much brain picking I can do and stealing from his now successful template.
I also think as, as part of this process, it would be interesting to learn to what extent does the architecture of a middle school cohere with the vision of what middle school education is? You know, to what, you know, how are they building, I mean, I'm trying to say that right, but, you know, middle school has changed, the conception of a middle school, what they, what, how kids come together, how teachers come together, and how, how do school buildings facilitate that? And it would be really interesting, I think, to, to visit middle schools that, you know, are models, you know, just from our own, so it's, it's not like we're gonna build this building. We could take a look at some middle schools of the same size or reasonable same size, just to learn. So this could, you know, how we could learn something about what, what, what would you want in a middle school? What have, what have people wanted? What have they tried? You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think that would be interesting just as a board to, to kind of learn those things.
That would be fun. Maria?
Well, listening to you, I still think of the 80% that don't have kids in school and don't particularly have a clue as what the middle school concept might be like. So that's, might be a starting point for our outreach to the community to talk about, because my kids went to middle school and this, and if it was good enough for them, why isn't it good enough for kids now? You know, and I think lots of people kind of find, you have to start pointing out the, the difference in time and difference in education. Looking at that video of them wheeling computers around. 80% of the town has not seen that. And that's important. So getting back to the community engagement. There is a huge subject of what's needed in today's education for a middle school.
I think that becomes the way you sell it because, you know, you get used to, like it's having an old car, you know, you get, you kind of get used to it. It kind of does everything you want, you know, my, my 2000 Civic. You know, it gets to be there, you know, but, but there's certain things it doesn't have.
It's also like the $400 a month that you're spending to fix it every month that gets you after a while. It's kind of like the middle school.
I think, you know, I think Al, you kind of talked about this. In terms of both Kenny's goal for like homework and, you know, just the demand, the school demands and the wellness issue, I think if we could be in more proximate contact with students. I think that we often get things that such a remove, you know, we don't hear, hear it from them. Not that we don't have to get information from administrators, but I, I don't know. I've found when we go into classrooms, haven't you found that?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, again, this last one that we went to where they were talking about, it was tremendous. I mean, I learned a lot about, I think, actually not just I, but the staff did as well. And I thought it was, it, it gives a student a voice. They know that they, their thoughts help us come up with a solution. And I would, you know, we've been invited, but I really think it's important that we get to do that at least once a year.
Anybody who's not spoken, am I glad to know you had some thoughts or?
I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay, fine.
I, just the things that I read, I also, I think it's good to have goals and certainly the middle school is one where they're multi-year. It's not as if we have to check this off. And, you know, I think if we're just setting goals and we hurdle them, we probably didn't set our standards high enough. So I throw that up and I just, Al, with the comment that you made, Al.
Are you carrying nitroglycerin pills in your pocket?
I, I still believe, and you're right, sitting in that classroom is great, but that classroom is this little microcosm with a teacher that was able, that had developed that relationship with the kids that led to that communication. To get to Maria's, we need to do what happened with that strategic plan with the kids in our school that has the anonymity, that allows them to express themselves and to really hear. That's the way we're gonna hear what our strengths are, what are weaknesses are, where, where the issues are coming from. I think that would so crystallize how we can do better from a mental health standpoint. And I think it's worth the investment.
So Tom, where do you want me to go from tonight's discussion? Do you want me to kind of get a draft for review? How would you like me to approach this?
Can I move that? We accept what we said.
Well, I think there's a, I mean, I, we could sit down and we could, you know, if you want to draft it, I could respond. And then come, you know, it seems, I mean, I think there's a, I think to some degree we're building off things that have happened in the past, you know, over the last year. And I think getting reports on things we've initiated, you know, so there's this kind of monitoring. I think these, so I think, I think we could probably come up with six or seven from this. I think some Kennys might be combined, you know, but.
I think one of the more insightful things that you offered last year, Tom, was to distinguish what a board goal is and what the administrative expectation is. So, you know, reports easily can be compiled by administration, you know, that, you know, which we do on a regular basis for you guys. Just that you're saying in this particular conversation, you want specific reports. You know, the, the start time piece is already underway. The conversation around homework is already underway. The conversation around scheduling is always already underway. So I see those going back to how you framed it last year, Tom, as work that administration would do and put out as reports. And then there, there are broader goals that the board owns and wants us to move forward on as a district. So I think that could be part of the work that you and I do, separate, not to say that administrative stuff doesn't get done because we do it all the time, but that we make a distinction like we did last year between what's the big picture goals and what's the day-to-day goals. And the day-to-day goals belong to us as administrators. And then we, we put into the calendar where we put out on homework in November. We'll put out on the schedule in January, you know, those kind of things. We'll put out on the transportation system in the spring. So we set it up so that you guys get those reports. And so the difference between what you guys want to own and what you want us to do.
And whether there's, whether there's things where I think we need to be more involved and not just hear, hear reports, you know, where we have to kind of get in the trenches and hear, hear what students have to say, you know, so.
So when I look at the goals of this year, and I appreciate what you're saying about reports, but to me, we've, this is almost to me like kind of a pause year because we've implemented a lot of stuff.
We have.
And I'm like, before we add more stuff to that plate, I want to see how effectively we've implemented. I mean, we've given, I mean, there's just a ton of things that are being asked to be done next fall. You know, I mean, start time alone is huge. So I'm, I'm much more interested, you know, that those goals are, you know, in the bigger picture, it's implementing those goals really is our goal. But I'm much more interested in seeing, instead of adding more things on top of that, how that went, you know, how effective was it? And then, so that sets us up for next year, which was like, how do we adapt to that? So again, it's, it's back to my initial thought of like, you know, we can keep adding stuff and keep adding stuff, but at this point, I just think there's enough things that are on the plate that really what we're looking at is how is that implementation going, how effective it is? And then as we move into next year's board goal that we, again, do we have to adapt time? Or, you know, again, there's just gonna be a lot of reacting to that. So I'm hesitant to keep adding things.
Gotcha. So the other, the other piece I wanted to put into the discussion was Maria mentioned the strategic plan. And of course, we keep on updating it and going back, just piggybacking on what you're saying, Al. You know, five years ago, we had that huge group of people that Maria remembers. We had over 100 people participating. We had community leaders elected and non-elected. We had ministers. We had students. We had staff. And in that, in that, in that meeting, we ended up with our first major goals, which involved the counseling at the high school, involved math, it involved music. It involved all-day kindergarten. That's where all of those came from. That is what prioritized out of that meeting. And I'm not looking for more work, but I'm wondering if it's not this year, if Al's approach and let's catch up with where we are and do the reports is where we are as a system, then I'd like to plant the seed that I think we need to revisit that process and, and then hear from the community again, a larger body of the community.
Like developing the next future.
Yeah, to see, make sure that we're still on, on base because we've done tremendous amount of work from that meeting. And so I, I think we might be at the place where we need to do that kind of in-depth community feedback again, to make sure that we are on course to what the community wants for the next five years.
Which would tie it, I think, to the middle school, don't you?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So I just, I think that that idea is important. I don't know that this is the year if, if we want to do the summary of where we are and continue what we've been doing, then we could gear up to another major community engagement piece, especially if we spend this year articulating what we see the middle school piece to be and then we'll have a, a group of people who can react to it. You know, over 100 people, we can have chiefs and town managers. But we also can have, you know, the blue collar worker, the college worker, the, you know, the farmer, you know, the minister, so forth and so on, just, you know, like we did before. We're very strategic in putting that, that group together so that we can have broad representation. It's very hard, as Maria knows and all of you know, to figure out what, you know, 16,000 people want in a three-community, you know, like this. So you have to figure out ways to elicit some kind of guidance. And I think Ken's point about, you know, if you get too selective, like in the classroom, you're getting that classroom's perspective, you're not getting the student's perspective. If you get too selective in choosing who sits at the committee, then you're not getting the broader, you know, feedback. So we have to figure out ways to do that. It's hard. That is the hardest thing that we have to do is figure out where we really are as a community and what the community wants. So I think, I think we've got enough guidance to start playing with it for another review by the board, Tom.
Okay, and I think that we, I think last time we, I think you had this really implementation plan that went with the goals. And I think that, I think maybe if we approved the goals and then you develop the implementation plan or you work with people.
And that worked out beautifully because when you guys wanted the report, I could pull out the August implementation plan and I could go down through it and say we achieved it or we didn't achieve it. So absolutely.
So maybe, maybe put on the first meeting in June, you know, we'll, you know, because I think we have plenty to do in the next meeting. But first meeting in June, have a draft of board goals and then we could maybe, you know, revise that. And then maybe the next meeting, we could maybe approve something like that. Does that sound like a, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so down to actions. We've done the first one, right? Then the second one. And we have vacancies at Moharmet, the middle school and the high school.
There are none at the Moharmet at this point. Those are just placeholders in case we have a nominee. So just to be, if I just take two seconds. Normally we'd be doing this work in July and August, but because the board, because the board gave us the wherewithal to go forward and start filling positions because of the retirement incentive, we've been working on this while we're still in, in the spring and winter. So, you know, it's been a really exciting process. The principals have been totally engaged in the process and really have hired, are recommending some outstanding candidates. So I do want to point out that we're way ahead of schedule in hiring. And at the next meeting, we may be very close to filling all of the 15 positions that we had from retirement. But as you saw tonight, there'll be people who leave that we weren't anticipating. And that means just that Suzanne or Jay or Dennis or David and Carrie will have like the kindergarten spot tonight, new positions to fill. But this But this process is going so well and I really want to commend the principals for the, for the aggressive work that they're doing related to it.
So I don't know if somebody wants to propose these as a block, these three positions, Al?
Yeah, I'll do it as a block. I'd like to make a motion to approve Sarah Powell for the fifth grade middle school position. I'm sorry, Sean, I'm going to butcher your name. Sean Pachel, I think it is.
Pachel.
Pachel, the ELO coordinator at the high school and Elliot Moore for oral language French at the high school.
Is there a second, Maria? Second? Really interesting group, you know?
One, the, the one that is, the one that captured my heart actually was Elliot Moore, who is currently a parent at the high school and has had several years of working with the high school kids. And she's a non-traditional candidate in the sense that she didn't get her teaching certificate, but she's fluent in Parisian French because she grew up in, in France. And in talking to her after Suzanne had, had forwarded to me, what an engaging personality this is going to be for our kids. So very exciting person to bring on board. So those kinds of things that are happening that are really fun to see.
And Sarah Powell went through our school system.
Sarah Powell is a graduate of, and Sarah Powell, her distinction on the list is, she is actually, in my tenure, the first person that we've hired directly out of the university. These normally, we have this vetting process that includes many, many years of experience. But she came through the process as just incredible young candidate that Jay could not resist nominating, just a really special lady and is a graduate of our system, which is kind of fun too.
And has worked as a parent in our system.
And she also has worked as a parent in our system.
And used the education opportunity.
So really nice candidates.
Well, you also hope with the first, somebody for who this is a first-time position is mentoring and supporting.
Absolutely, and that is already, Jay's already made the commitment on Sarah, Suzanne has already made the commitment on Elliot. And Sean comes to us as a veteran vocational education director. So really incredible credentials coming into the ELO coordinator. And the way that we envision that is he will be part of the school counseling department that includes the social workers as well as the counselors. So he's not going to be a singleton out there, he's going to be integrated into that department and very excited by his candidacy as well.
And I think it'd be interesting for us to see how he admits that position because, I mean, if you're talking about somebody, say, teaching 10th grade math, you kind of know what that is, but this is kind of something where you're going to have to create it, right? I think that's going to be real interesting how you do that. So, so we ready to vote? We have a motion and a second, right? Are we to vote on these three? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those are approved.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the middle school volunteer coach.
Al?
Let's see, I'm sorry. Al?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School volunteer coach.
Moved by Al, is there a second? Second by Maria? Discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, that's approved, okay. Committee updates?
There was also a paid position on the.
There's a paid position too.
On the sheet from Cory.
Oh, what?
There's a paid coach.
Emily Geltz, outdoor track.
Okay.
So Al's ready for that.
So could I, so we've approved, I've.
Paul Stenmark.
Thanks for catching that. Yeah, so we approved Paul Stenmark, so could I have a motion to approve Emily Geltz as for a paid position for outdoor track?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Emily Geltz for outdoor track.
Moved by Al, second by Michael, thanks for catching that. All those in favor? Six in favor, okay.
That's a Swedish name, Stenmark.
I wish I'd had that pronunciation correct.
Do we have to put the motion again with it? Committee updates? No? Okay. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. Sorry, I missed the opening public comment, I went to the high school and made it.
It's kind of sad since you live right here.
It is sad. My daughter went on the China trip and I wanted to thank the board and the administration for approving it and supporting it. Thanks to Dave Irvin, Jey Du and Ping Ping and all the chaperones who made the trip really so great. And thanks to everybody else who made it happen. My daughter was impressed, so it's pretty hard to do. But she's already back and complaining about homework.
I hope in fluent Chinese.
Can I make one quick public comment?
Sure.
I was reminded when we did the nomination for the middle school track coach, tomorrow is the first time in Oyster River history that a home track meet will be hosted on our own track. So if you are interested in checking it out tomorrow, middle school track meet, 3:30.
Cool.
Cool.
So I predict Patrick O'Brien will set the track record.
Middle school meet, no, he's next week, May 9.
Oh, it's a middle school meet?
It's a middle school meet, May 9 is the first high school meet next week.
Okay. Good. Okay, so we have the workshop next week and I thought it would be useful if you have questions in advance that you'd like to pose, I mean, obviously we give, you know, questions can be generated in the discussion, but if you have questions in advance you'd like to pose and then we can pass those on to, you know, administrators because it may be something that, you know, if they have a little bit of time to gather information or even think through some of these questions. I think the major part is for us to talk among ourselves, but I think that there'd also, so the opportunity to get information that we haven't gotten or clarification that we haven't got. But if you, if you'd like to send the questions probably what, to Wendy or?
No, you should send them to me and Wendy will obviously handle them. But I just want to remind the board that don't send them to each other, you send them directly to me because if you start sending communications to each other, you'd be in violation of your own policy.
Yeah.
So I'll collate the questions and whatever research needs to happen, we'll do before we get to the meeting and we'll be good to go.
Okay.
And I'll send a reminder out tomorrow morning.
Okay. Then our next regular meeting would be what, 17th?
Yep.
At Moharmet.
Okay.
So we have no non-public, so can I motion to adjourn?
Will they adjourn?
Moved by Michael, second by Maria.
What?
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You violated it. A rookie mistake.
That's it.
All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.